Welcome to this meeting of the Milton Planning Board. This is our 14th meeting of fiscal year 18, which started last July 1st. And let's introduce ourselves. I'm Alex Whiteside, the chairman. Brian?
Brian Furze, member.
Julia Gavin Clark.
Liam Clark, planning director.
Laura Muster, assistant town planner.
Denny Swenson, member.
Cheryl Tagheas, member.
All right. We're going to meet again sometime later in January. Brian, you have some suggestions?
I can be flexible, except for the date of the 25th, or I can call in that evening. So...
What about the 24th, which is a Wednesday?
That's okay for me.
Lauren seems to have an update.
If I may, it's been requested that the board of selectmen and the planning board hold a joint meeting to discuss the Falcone project. After several back-and-forth attempts at scheduling this in January, it appears that the 25th works for the board of selectmen.
The whole board?
One member of the board, but that is the date we've chosen, so...
The 25th is Thursday?
Yes.
Well...
So two members can attend, or one?
One member. So it would no longer be a joint meeting, but we would have one member of the board of selectmen attending a meeting.
Why? Well, I thought we wanted to have a joint meeting.
It's the benefit of that.
For the benefit of...
Would you rather have me here or Katie here? I guess is what it comes down to.
Why can't we have all three selectmen and all five planning board members?
That would be ideal, but we have gone back and forth on dates, and there does not seem to be an ideal choice for a date in January.
Well, what about February?
Okay, let's take a look.
I mean, I don't see that it makes much sense having a joint meeting if... I mean, we can discuss Falcone at our meeting on whenever it is and ask Katie to come. But she's... She might be able to do Wednesday, the 24th, if we just have it. One selectman might be able to do it. It isn't really a joint meeting.
I can inquire.
What?
I can inquire.
All right. In any event, shall we meet on Wednesday?
For me.
What about Tuesday, the 23rd? The 24th is a little tricky for me. I could do it, but it would be a little tricky.
Tuesday, the 23rd. Are the selectmen meeting that night?
The Falcones are having a meeting that night, right, Ned?
There's a meeting scheduled with the Neighborhood Association on the 23rd.
All right. So we probably should do it on the 24th. Denny?
Okay. I'll make it work.
The 23rd doesn't seem to... Seems to be conflicted. So let's do the... We said the 24th?
Yep. 7:00 P.M.
And we will devote the first hour to Falcone.
Thank you, everyone.
Do we think that will be here?
We think that it's definitely going to be either here or the Council on Aging.
Okay.
But I think it... I mean, since it isn't really a joint meeting, it's probably going... We can probably do it here. If it were a joint... A real joint meeting, I'm sure that we would get more...
And this is informational, not... There's no application, right?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So we've done that. I've sent some minutes.
Sorry. I was not reading them as I did that.
Julia, remind us that these things are being circulated later on in the meeting, if you want to get the 21st. And next time, we'll do the 20... We'll do the first meeting in December, maybe both meetings. We have two meetings in December?
Yeah, 28.
All right. So then we can do those. All right. Now, we're going to do Citizens Speak. Any citizens?
28 is canceled, never mind.
What?
We did not have a meeting on December 28.
Yeah, it was canceled.
That's why...
All right. Well, so those are easy minutes. All right. We have a citizen speak. Introduce yourself and address a topic that's of relevance to the board.
Good evening. It's Ned Corcoran, 70 Morton Road. I'm asking to speak as a citizen for two purposes. One, about a month ago, at a late in the evening at a meeting of the planning board, lost my cool and walked out on the board. I thought that was rude, and I wanted to apologize to the board publicly for that.
Okay.
The second... And so the second is that because it's not on the agenda tonight, I do want to just give a brief preview of what we're doing in the next month with respect to the Falcone project, so that at least you're... The public and you are thinking about where we are. We were before the board of selectmen in December with a new plan that has reduced the building to a 10% affordable alternative. It's 50 units, down from 71 to 61. And we are... Want to pursue a zoning outcome with the planning board, hoping for a special town meeting in either May or June. The Falcones have moved the project a great deal. We think it's the best they can do, subject to some tweaking. And we look forward to working beginning on the 23rd with the Neighborhood Association and the boards on the 24th. But we need... We're going to be asking you in the selectmen and the neighborhood to give us solid feedback relatively quickly about whether or not you all think that we can get to an outcome with 50 units in June. If we can't, I don't want to waste the board's time, the neighborhood's time. We'll move forward in another direction. But we really want to work with the neighborhood and the boards to this outcome if we can. And I'm just asking people to think about that between now and when they're back before you on the 24th. So, thank you.
We understand that people sometimes can get a little aggravated at our meetings, and that's understandable, so don't...
Don't sweat it.
Don't sweat it, right? All right. Now, let's do 61 Sheldon Street, which is an A&R. And why don't you briefly run through it? Hit the high point.
Oh, good evening. I'm Mary McCetrick, attorney for the applicants, for this request for approval of an A&R plan. This is for two lots at 61 Sheldon Street. This division of this lot, which is approximately 19,000 square feet, has gone through a long process with the Board of Appeals, which began in May 2017, and was initially approached as a special permit under the zoning bylaw for... As an exception to the lot size... Lot dimension requirements. These two lots have less than the required linear distance of frontage at 50... Approximately 50 and 59 feet. The lots are much larger... Well, quite a bit larger than required. This is a C-zone, 7,500 square feet is the requirement, and the lots are about 8,000 and 10,000 square feet. It's the frontage that was the issue for the Board of Appeals. After a hearing before the Board of Appeals, the board determined that because... Although one family had together... Members of the family had owned the two lots since 1905 and had occupied a Victorian-style house on the lot since 1905 until just last year, when the last remaining family member died. Because one brother owned one lot, and that same brother and another brother owned the second lot, it wasn't common ownership, and it didn't qualify under the exception. So that required that we come back to the board with an application for a variance. So we're coming to the planning board now to request approval for an A&R plan because we had to approach this as a subdivision of the lot, dividing it into two lots. The variance is for the frontage, because these lots have less than the required amount of frontage. And we went through a fairly long hearing process with the Board of Appeals, on which all kinds of factors relating to this lot were discussed, including the nature of existing lots on Sheldon Street, which is that the lots are all smaller than 8,000 and 10,000 square feet. Many of them do have non-conforming frontage. Many of them have Victorian houses of a relatively early period. I don't have the exact numbers here, but it could be maybe eight to 10 at least. And so one factor in this case is that the neighborhood was very positive about maintaining the Victorian house. It still looks the same from the outside. It's been completely renovated inside. And in order to do this project, the developer wished to subdivide the lot. He will then build a house in the second lot that will be similar in design to the existing house, which is what I call... I call it a farmhouse-style Victorian. It's a simple Victorian house with a peak roof. It has a porch along the front. Both houses will look much the same, obviously. One will be new and one will be old. So that was one factor. The other was simply that the immediate neighbors were very supportive of the project and the developer, and liked what he had done with the existing house. They also really liked the buyer for the house, who will be the buyer if this whole project is approved. And they came to the hearings and testified, along with the neighbors. So after a lot of discussion and framing, this is a very narrow exception, the board of appeals did decide to grant the variance for the frontage nonconformity. So that then meant that the next step was for me to come before the planning board with an A&R plan, which I'm presenting to you tonight, and ask you to approve that as an approval-not-required plan. Both lots have frontage on a public way, which is Sheldon Street. That's the basic summary.
Now, what about the fact that the houses... Isn't the house too close to the street?
No, because the calculation for the required setback is done in terms of adjacent houses. This is from the building commissioner. This is his determination.
Okay. I mean, the building commissioner has figured out...
It's an average setback, and so it doesn't have to be the full setback, because adjacent houses are not...
No, you've got a variance for the frontage. You should have your location block. What do we call it, Bill? The location block?
Locust.
What?
The locust?
On an A&R plan?
Don't we have the locust on the A&R plans?
Yeah.
We have the locust. This is all stuff you can put on it, and then take the plan to Bill. And you also have to put the recording information for the variance.
Okay. I had another one like this. I only put the decision date...
Recorded in book 357...
Right.
17 at page 300.
I'm happy to put that on there. I used a method I had used with a previous case, where I just had the decision date in there, so happily we'll put that on.
All right. I mean, it's all going to be in the... And then you're going to have a little locust, because if Mr. Duffy were here, he'd want it.
Yeah, but you don't... I mean, it's not listed in your requirement. I'm not objecting, but I don't... The engineer didn't know that he needed to do that.
I thought that we... Don't we require it, Bill?
We do.
Okay. Well, I must have missed... You know, he or I misunderstood that. It's fine. He'll do it. You'll have to do it fast, because I want to get this... Would you be willing to authorize Bill Clark to sign?
That's what we're going to do.
Okay.
When you bring in the plan with all the stuff done, he's going to endorse it for you. Maybe you can do it tomorrow.
I'm going to try to. The engineer's already promised to... If he had to do any changes, to do them really quickly.
All right.
This is not something that should require, you know, additional work. I mean, he can do the locust using his...
He just...
It's a standard thing.
And he's got to put in the recording information. So he's got to do... He's got to do something.
I'll do that.
All right. So any questions, board members?
Could you remind me the three things that we look at when we approve an A&R?
On A&R, we generally look to see whether or not the buildings... Frontage is the most important thing. We look to see if the frontage is in order. And area, we look at, because if it doesn't have satisfactory area, we'll insist that the lot be deemed not a billable lot, even though we may endorse the plan. And then we look at the buildings, and if the buildings are in violation of the zoning, we may ask for an appropriate statement on the plan with respect to the building.
Don't we also weigh in on the adequacy of the way?
Not if it's a public street.
Not if it's public. Okay.
If it's a public street, that's...
That's suffice it. Okay.
That's suffice it.
Okay.
And Sheldon Street is a public street, Bill?
Yes.
All right.
It's a public way.
So I think that we're good to go here.
Thank you. If you have shown me where locust map is on the list, I will make sure that we put that on.
All right. Okay. So now you... This is good. We're not asking for something we're not entitled to. So I will entertain a motion that we authorize Mr. Clark to endorse this plan that is not requiring subdivision approval upon receipt of the amended plan with the recording information and the locust plan.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Discussion, all in favor? All right.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thanks.
And Mr. Clark, will you be available tomorrow, if by chance I can get this done?
Yes.
The bylaw?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
As well. All right. 1065 Brushhill Road.
Good evening. Ned Corcoran, on behalf of Juliet Turner. This is a continuation... Further continuation of hearing dealing with the subdivision of a lot bounded by two private ways, as you know. We are nano-inches away from an agreement that ties everything up in a nice bow. We're dealing with one last issue we think is resolvable. We thought we'd have it done today. Didn't quite get there. But we expect to be back, if possible, on the 24th with a plan with a set of conditions that the board can review and accept. And so we're herding cats, and we think we're about there.
Okay.
So I'd ask for a continuance.
We will... Questions from the board? All right, then. We'll entertain a motion to continue the... I mean, we're going to continue it, but a motion to continue the hearing to the...
24th.
24th at 8:00?
We have no public hearing scheduled for the 24th.
You give the first hour to...
First hour.
We're thanking Falcone for an hour at the beginning. So 8 o'clock?
That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay. All in favor? All right. All right. That was about as quick as... So now we're going to just stay where you are.
I thought that might be a possibility.
We're going to do the... We're going to do 324 and 328 Adam Street.
And I represent... I represent Michael and Cynthia George, who are property owners at 328 Adam Street, and don't directly represent the Bullmans, who are their butters at 324 Adam Street. But they are working together on a fairly simple swap of two 5,100-square-foot parcels. Each parcel would be non-buildable, but would be exchanged to the other for the purpose of squaring off property. We started with the notion that it was a... So the proposed plan is a plan prepared by Sami Odys, consultant, dated November 30. You each have a copy of that. And the property in question, the George property, it's all... It's previously came out of one larger set of property. It was part of the Forbes estate years ago. This lot was created in 1980, late '80s. And there is... It's a pork chop lot with 150 feet of frontage. It's Residence A, so 150 feet of frontage on Adam Street. That's the George property, which kind of has 150 feet, comes up along a shared driveway, and it is a very ultimately a large parcel, beautiful parcel, developed. And the Bullmans own 150 feet of frontage on Adam Street and have itself, themselves, a nice parcel. The driveway access to both parcels is off of the private way in. We discovered when we started on the process of creating the A&R plan that the... If we just take Lot 1G, which is down below, and hand it off to the Bullmans, that we get out of compliance with the rule that says 80% of the frontage needs to exist at 75% of the depth, the required depth. So two choices. One, we could go to the Board of Appeals for variance. Or two, I think simpler and probably more appropriate in this case, is to request the board determine that the frontage along the private way is itself adequate for the purposes of being frontage for the George property. The next two items is a plan that was dated 1948, divided one lot into five lots. That is the lot that is immediately across the private way from the Georges' property. And formerly was a single lot where 340... The address of 340 Adam Street was the dwelling. The two lots that are closest in front on Adam Street, 344 and 348, were created by this lot, this planned division. And the only frontage that's available for 340 is the frontage on the quote-unquote "avenue" 40 feet wide that's referenced in the plan. I've handed you Google Earth images of the way. It is a well-constructed way that is adequate. The Jack Irwin... And this plan actually shows locations of drivers that's taken from the town's website. This shows location of driveways. Jack Irwin's at 344. His driveways come off of that way. 340 driveway comes off of that way. There's an additional recently-developed property down in the back that has... That comes off the end of the way, and then the Georges', and the Bullmans' come off of that way. That way is well-constructed, contains utilities. It is adequate, and I think, to serve as frontage in this case. And I just think it... In this case, it's more appropriate to request the board to determine that frontage is adequate for the purpose of an A&R plan than go through the process of a variance. And so we've got the plan in draft form, so that if there's any other... If there's any issues or concerns with the plan, we can modify that before we ask for permission to endorse the plan. But that's the premise of the...
So can you tell us why they want to do this?
They...
I mean, you can see that, obviously, they have 80,000 square feet.
Each have large lots.
Which is what you need for...
This is Residence A.
You've got enough for two lots.
Yeah, it's Residence...
And anything... But they've only got enough frontage for...
For one.
For one. But they will, with this transfer, have enough frontage for two.
Well...
In other words, they could... They're keeping... They could... This A&R may result in the construction of another house.
Actually, I don't think you could do that, because the... You don't have 80-foot depth.
It doesn't... It doesn't tough.
You won't have 80 feet... 80% of the length required at 75% of the... At 100 feet. You wouldn't be able to... You wouldn't be able to do a legally conforming division of the George lot.
Because it would bump into the house?
Because it would...
Well, no. I'm talking about the...
The Bullman's?
The Bullman house.
No, they only... Their only frontage is on Adam Street.
Well, I understand, but if... I mean, I see that they don't quite touch the way, but is there an intention that they divide this property into two lots?
No. Not at all. This is...
What? Why do they want to do this?
Because it's worth $600,000.
Here's Alex. Alex is going to be to show you on the aerial. So this lot is the George lot, okay? This is the Bullman lot. Bullman's only frontage on any way is on Adam Street. This lot does not front on this. They are landlocked in this way by the George property. The George property does this. This was created this way so that you got 100... You had 80% of the depth of the frontage at 75% of the required.
Right.
Right. So what they want to do is take this and trade to this for about this, which would go here. It's just a simple swap of unbuildable lots.
And do... I mean, one reason they might want to do this is that they have an agreement that after they do it, they will simply move the... Move this line to here.
No.
And they would then have a second frontage.
No, there's no agreement to do that. In fact, this is subject to a conservation easement. They can't... There's no agreement to do that. This is all about each developing their property to the maximum capacity possible. The Georges' have spent a significant amount of money on redeveloping this old mansion. This property is owned by the Conservation Trust. And so it's simple... Simply to do that, there is no...
What about further down? Aren't there open areas?
Yes. That Raj...
Could be developed if it were a street?
No. If you can go further down, it's all subject to conservation restriction.
We think that there is no...
They can't develop further. Raj Pathic owns two lots back there, and they're both controlled by conservation restrictions.
They have significant... He's got, what, nine acres? About seven acres is subject to conservation restriction. This abuts the Forbes Woods, which is under DCR control.
And the conservation restriction is...
There is a conservation restriction on this portion of the property. The Conservation Trust owns this property.
I still don't understand why they need to do this.
It's just so that each one can make their own property a little nicer. That's all it is.
But you're changing the frontage. That's...
No, we're not...
You've asked for that, though.
We're only asking to change the frontage for purposes of avoiding a variance relative to the frontage requirement here.
For the depth.
For the depth. So rather than go to the Board of Appeals, we're coming to the planning board and asking the planning board to determine simply that this way is adequate for the purpose of providing frontage for this lot, serving as legal frontage for this lot.
And of course, it is a rather classic pork chop lot. I mean, the frontage doesn't really serve the current lot.
No. My only concern is what... The same concern you had, is I don't understand why they're doing it unless there's some plan to subdivide it down the road.
Unless they want to put another lot in.
There is... Knowing the two of them, there is no...
It seems like there's a reason to do it, otherwise.
There is no plan to do it. There's no plan to convey... I don't know how you could do it.
Well, what you do is you...
Well, he's not going to... He's not going to end up with 80...
If you have frontage here, you then... You just bring this out to the street.
But he's not going to end up with 80,000 square feet.
He's going to, because he's got 76 plus 5.
Minus 5.
Plus 5.
No, no. Plus this 5.
Yeah, but...
They're swapping 5.
But he's not... But no, he's swapping this for this.
Right.
It's a swap.
It's a net.
He's got 76, and he's...
And he's gaining this, but he's giving up this.
Are these existing lots?
No, but this is 76. This is 76 without this. And so you add this, he's got 80,000.
That, I suppose that's right. There is no intention.
But they could sell the land or the house, and somebody else would come in and do it then.
No.
And I'm sorry, what about the Kelly House? Kelly, 340?
Yeah.
So, that's a, that's gotta be more than 80,000 square feet. There's no.
That's an existing.
I understand it's existing. Unless it's under historic restriction, though. That's, it's a big lot.
Yeah, used to.
Oh, there are two houses on that.
One is.
One is a garage.
Looks like a garage.
With an encouragement.
Or a barn. It looks like it's on the other lot, too.
Yeah.
Kelly's three acres.
So, that's a.
It's three acres.
Removable property.
Yeah, it's a large lot.
This guy, Doris.
400 feet of frontage.
Don't spend money on Nate working for nothing.
All right, well, let's take a look at it. We, we, we got the thing. Let's, let's go out and look at the street and determine this at our next meeting. What do you think? Okay?
Yep.
I would like the planning staff to take a hard look at whether, if these properties changed hands, regardless of what the current owners think, that whether this would open up subdivision opportunity here. I'd just like to understand that.
I'm not sure it's in our press anyway.
I mean, that is, that, that is a factor.
Is it?
I think it's a factor.
It's a factor in the adequacy of the street, I think.
Okay.
But I, I mean, we'll, we'll figure this out. All right.
Will you be going out individually to look at it?
I think individually is the way to do it. Just because getting a meeting was.
Could I get the actual footage of each, of each lot as, as proposed, just to, so I can picture it? So, is it, is it 80,000, or is it 79, or where are we?
If you look at the A and R proposed plan.
Mm-hmm.
The Georges' own 193,000 square feet.
Okay.
Plus 5100 square feet.
You want to circle it, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You just have to add.
Where are you, right here?
Yeah. So, you'd have to take this area, and then where it says, sorry.
Yeah, I forgot.
They own Lot 1F.
Where it's going to be combined with 1H. So, that means the lot would be this plus that.
Okay.
And this one would be that plus that.
Bullman's own 1H.
Okay, this plus this.
And they currently own 1J, so they own 76 plus 51.
Okay.
All right. The lots across the street are.
Now, you, you might also consider, what is this street going to be called? Because it's going to need a street sign. Do we get to name it?
It's a private, it's a private way.
No, it, it's going to be a street, and it's going to have a name, right, Phil?
It's a way in existence before 1938, and it's.
We're determining it qualifies as a street. It's got to have a name, doesn't it?
You determine it's adequate for frontage. All of the, all of the, all of the, all of the, the dwellings are numbered on Adam Street, including Raj Pathak, who's down in the back.
I understand, but if, if the frontage is on this way, then.
They all have frontage on the way.
Well, I understand that, but if.
Raj's, Raj's actually created this, and he doesn't have.
They may not have frontage on the way, because they were built before you needed frontage on the way.
No, 340 was divided in 1948.
But you didn't need frontage, you didn't need frontage actually on a street at that 1940.
When did that moment?
Sure they did, because.
In the 50s, I believe.
Because they, when they created, in 1948, when they created this, the frontage became frontage on Adam Street for both of the other two lots.
I, I think that you'll find that back then, you didn't need a street running by to have frontage. You just measured along what would be the front of the lot, not along the street. So, in any event, we'll, we'll, we'll check this out. What was the, what was the issue we were discussing? I totally forgotten.
Whether it's adequate.
No, the, this most, why we were, oh, oh, the street sign, the street sign, the name of the street. It seems to me you just can't have ways that have no street sign and say that this is where you have your frontage. How does the fire department know where these things are? In any event, this is something, this is something.
There's a beautiful, there's a beautiful street sign that identifies all of the street numbers, all.
This is something we'll figure out.
324, 328, 340, 344, they're all.
I understand, but if this is a way, the way should have a name, and they probably lose their Adam Street addresses.
I don't think that's going to happen.
Well, that's what you say, but it's happened in other communities. I, I know it's happened in other communities.
Yeah, but why would you do that? It's senseless to do that.
I'm simply asking you, why, it's not what we do. I'm asking you about the name, what would the name of the street be? And you say it's not going to have a name. Because it doesn't, streets don't need names in Milton.
No, this way exists, and it doesn't need to be renamed for the purpose.
It is going, we are going to determine it's a street, providing frontage.
Determining that it is a way that is adequate for the purpose of providing frontage.
Right.
It doesn't necessarily need a new name.
Okay, well, I, you know, I hear your argument, but I think you're wrong. But we'll figure it out.
Thank you.
So now we get to go to 333 Brush Hill Road. We have the developer's engineer here, I'm glad to see. Our engineer is not going to be here. He sent a letter to you. Why don't the people at the table introduce themselves?
My name is David Ute. I'm the attorney for the mansions at Brush Hill Condominium Trust.
Frederick Geisel, I'm principal engineer with Civil and Environmental Consultants of PBD.
Okay, and has everyone watched, who wasn't at our last meeting, watched the tape?
Yes, I watched it.
As requested?
I was here, but I have watched all of the tapes, in any case.
I watched the tape.
All right. So, we had a long discussion, because our engineer has found that they can't have, that there are some defects in the plan, and that there are certain inabilities to determine if there may be further defects. And so, you were asked to communicate with our engineer and, and get to work in addressing the issues, right?
Yes, and I, I did so. He actually sent me an email last week, the end of last week, and asked, you know, summary of the meeting and some items that we needed attention. I would, we haven't determined if there's any defects in the plan. That was not determined.
Or in the construction.
The construction, yes.
All right, okay, that's what I meant to say.
Well, yes. We had, he's got a different area, and he doesn't know, it was a different drainage area, and we needed to determine, because there's a, it's really a flat area, whether the drainage goes one way or the other way. And I looked back to our records and couldn't find anything, you know, which indicates where we had detailed survey in the area to determine where the water would go. I, I did give him a drainage map, and when I made copies of the report, there was a reduced copy, reduced-sized copy of the watershed plan in here. And when the secretary made copies, she said, well, it's oversized, I have to copy that separately. But she didn't put it in the report that was given to him. So, I've got a plan for him. I thought he was going to be here tonight, I was going to give it to him. Otherwise, I'll, I'll email it to him.
You can give it to Mr. Clark because of the storm coming in. We're going to want you and he to go out there tomorrow, and.
That's my, that's my plan.
And he's going to go out tomorrow also.
Okay.
And so, we, we will get this.
Yeah, I did have copies for.
And any pictures that people can take are, are going to take.
The best way, the best time to analyze drainage is during a heavy rainstorm.
Right, exactly. Oh, now, you're taking your plan apart because?
These were just copies. I was going to give them a copy.
Oh, okay, good.
I had three copies of the drainage.
Oh, all right.
Which was in the report. And I did say, yes, in fact, I've talked to the developer, and we discussed a few items, like the level spreader coming out of the infiltrators gallery, the main infiltrator gallery. You know, I told him, it's open on the end, it's not supposed to be, it's supposed to be a level spreader, so it kind of dissipates the flow over a wide area. And so, it's a simple fix. We can cap that.
Right.
So.
But maybe not tomorrow morning?
Probably not. I don't think we have the materials. I, I understand they're off-site because of some legal disagreements. I'm not really involved in those. So, I think he's waiting to resolve things before he goes back to the sites and continues work, or if he's going to be.
Well, in any event, we've got some engineering to do, and if you can't get on the site tomorrow, would you get Mr. Prandak to escort him?
Yes.
Okay.
I was there today.
All right.
And I actually talked to the site guy today, site contractor.
Contractor.
And he said that the inspection ports are there. He goes, they're just buried. He said, if I don't bury them, when you do the grading, they get broken off. And if you break them off, then you have to rip up the whole system, because you don't just break it, it knocks that piece out of whack, and it fills with dirt. So, he said he'd rather have them, he knows where they are, he has them in his plan, he has them located, so that he can just go back and dig in that spot and find them.
Right, but we can't inspect without using the ports.
Right.
And he can bury them after we use them, after they're used.
After they're inspected by the engineer, but that's.
The typical way is, you may raise them above grade or bury them below, and then re-dig them out, and then bring them to grade. Essentially, like adjusting a manhole or a water gate, something like that. You bury it so it doesn't get wiped out, and then you can raise it to grade and.
And our engineer has submitted a list of questions to you, right?
Yes, yeah. And I responded to him, and I said, I agree with your questions, and that, you know, I was going to go check what information, further information we had. I don't remember it being detailed survey. So, the idea would be, when things cleared out enough, that we would resurvey the area. We might be able to tell some things tomorrow when the rain starts.
I mean, we've got a survey, we've got a new survey.
Mm-hmm, right.
You've, you've got a copy of the new survey.
He did a limited survey of that.
What?
He didn't do a detailed survey of that whole area. So, I don't, you know, he did more of as-built of the, the stuff built down below. This is up on the upper reaches of the drainage area.
Okay, now, board members, what do you, we've, we've got, if you have questions, let's ask them, and then we'll ask Mr. Ute if he has any questions.
Is the ground too frozen to dig that hole near the tennis court that was discussed at the last meeting?
Right now, it's, it's, we had a deep freeze, because we had extremely cold weather with not much snow. Snow insulates, but we had deep freeze before we had any substantial snow. And so, the frost got deep into the ground. Now, what's happened the last couple of days with warm temperatures, you'd say, well, this is, it's not frozen, because it's on surface. But it's only the top, maybe six inches that's unfrozen, and that we have to wait till we got an extended period of time. You can, if, you could do some digging, I've done it in the middle of winter, when we had Snowmageddon three years ago. You know, we're out there, had to actually access a site in a snowshoe, it prevents sinking, sinking into my waist, but we were able to dig, you know. The snow has actually a very good insulator. It keeps the ground, you know, really at freezing or just above freezing, so, but unfortunately, this year, we got the, we got the zero-degree temperatures first before we got substantial snow.
So, I, I watched the tape today. How, how deep do you need to get that hole? I'm, I'm concerned about the abutters and, and the surrounding area getting damaged. So, is it an eight-inch kind of hole that you need to put in?
Well, no, we have, we have an eight-inch pipe coming out of the depression.
Okay.
And the basin there, and this is, I'm looking upside down, but it's, it's about, at its deepest point, about eight feet deep, seven, eight feet deep, yeah. So, it's not, it's not just a shallow swale. It will be fairly shallow, but right now, there's, it's mounted up, it's a higher elevation.
Okay.
Alex, I have a simple question, I think, but looking at this email that we were provided, there are eight items on it, do you have that?
Yes, I do.
So, number, number five says that, is there going to be enough lip along the end of the driveways to prevent road runoff from going down the driveways? That's something that we discussed in general, but not the lip last week.
Right, no, we discussed making sure the water on the driveways gets to the catch basins, and it gets to the infiltrators, individual infiltrators. This is a separate issue. You know, keeping the water in the roadway, so that doesn't, it doesn't go down, off the roadway and down the driveway. That should be.
So, would this be something that's kind of like a fix versus what was on the plans?
Well, it would be with the final pavement, stuff like that, you can then address those issues.
Okay.
Create more of a, more of a lip, which is very gradual, so it's not like a speed bump.
Isn't, oh, isn't there going to be granite curbing down there?
There will be granite curbing, but not at the driveways themselves.
This is at the end of the driveway?
See, at the end of the driveways, it comes down the road.
A little, they have a little dam-like thing that they could have.
Yeah, but just to keep, keep the water in the roadway, so that it can be collected by the catch basins.
So, can I ask a question of Mr. Geisel while he's here?
Oh, absolutely. I just wanted to finish the, let the, let the board finish, and then you can ask him a couple of questions.
Thank you.
So then, just again, continuing on a couple of these, the, some of what we talked about was that we'd have to wait to see about the evaluation that we were talking about before you make some suggestions of the adequacy. But then, there was also this idea of the, the area which was factored into the design that you did, and you had said, I believe, at the last meeting, that you hadn't factored in up slope beyond this, this property. And yet, our engineer had suggested that that's an issue, that's an area which should have been factored in, in his view, and that if there are supplemental things done, that that would be an area in which to catch things before they move down. So, is that something that you can do while we have snow cover and frozen ground now?
Some of it depends on how much snow. Right now, I probably couldn't do it, but once we get this rain and the, and the snow is really dissipating and mostly gone, then we can go out there and take a look and see what's, what the, what the grades are. He did say, he says, he's calculated a drainage area of 8.4 acres, which includes a 2.7 acres of possible overflow from the catch basins on the center road going down there. So, he said, does it come down here, or does it go elsewhere?
So, the, our town GIS has topography. Would that be sufficient for you to use to do an analysis without?
No, no, we've actually used the town topography, and we had to go out and check various areas on this site, because the topography wasn't accurate or detailed enough.
So, are you suggesting that you've committed to your client to survey the additional area and determine whether your design is adequate to address that part of the land?
Right, yes.
Okay. Just wanted to be sure, because it sounds to me like, until we have that answered, we're really not going to be able to even evaluate the adequacy of what was designed or installed.
Right. Right.
That's up to me now.
Okay, David?
So just a couple of remarks. First of all, my clients, we've said this before, I'll say it again, very grateful that you required this peer review engineer to do this work. Without, I guess, my client's overall impression is that the checks and balances in place with the town were clearly insufficient. We've heard over and over again at these meetings, so-and-so signed off, it's okay, everything's okay. What's apparent from this rapport, which is very thorough, and we've run it past our drainage expert, and he agrees with the analysis. He's the one who took these photos and walked the site. And I'd like to go through those in a quick, quick second, was that, number one, this system is not designed properly, doesn't take into account the upland area, and it's probably not big enough to accommodate the drainage on site. And number two, based upon the plan that was submitted, it wasn't constructed according to the plan. So all these things happened that didn't go through, you know, weren't caught. In addition, I think what's apparent from the BSC report, and I'm sure you guys discussed it, was, and we've heard from Mr. McKenna's people, Mr. Nevin, and they got Mr. Hunt in here, that not much happened from the landscaping or anything. But this report says that almost 20,000 square feet of land was clear-cut that shouldn't have been clear-cut, and that not two trees or four trees, but that many trees were eliminated. What the report doesn't go into, which our arborist goes into, is not only have the trees been eliminated, many trees have, root systems have been irreparably damaged. So I would just say that this BSC report as a threshold issue confirms, in my mind, I would hope it in yours as well, that the representations made to you by this developer time and time again are not credible. And that everything that he says, or his representative says to this board, you can take at face value, but I would ask that you continue to verify them through this process because this is a good process. What we would like to see here is that, and I think this is what I'm hearing, what you'd like to see, is that a proper design be created for this once they can do the analysis of the topography, and that the applicant, the developer, pay for that, to be approved by BSC, and then it to be constructed in accordance with the design, to be verified by BSC, so that it works, and that it's been signed off on by a good check and balance system, this BSC company. The question, the question that I have between when that analysis gets done and it gets implemented is, what, because I mentioned, I heard a concern about the butters. The overarching concern that we have is there's no temporary drainage system on, or measures on site to address runoff to these other landowners. And when I came before you last time, we, we were lucky that we had a very large rainstorm, and I was out on site with our drainage expert, Sean Riley from Coastal Engineering, who provided you guys with the report, and also with photos that, if Lauren, just, if you wouldn't mind just toggling through them, maybe Mr. Geisel, I don't know if you've seen them, can see that there, that, that... And there's little captions beneath it, if you want. So there's, there's the roadway and driveway catch basins that have been installed, but because the top coat of asphalt hasn't been installed yet, the catch basins don't basically do anything because they're too high over the asphalt. So if you just scroll, I don't, I'm sorry, Lauren, if you want, just, yeah. So you can see that that's not doing anything. So there's nothing temporary to address that. And if you go down one, that's that thing that hasn't been capped that runs on the edge of the, of the recharge, or?
Yeah, the infiltrators.
Correct. Yeah, so that's the pipe that's still in trench drain. It's not capped at the end of it, so water's just flowing out of it. And if you go down a little bit, this is, this is where you could see it's not capped. And literally, water has formed a stream that goes right down there. In addition, the grading around this pipe is insufficient to keep the trench intact, which results in divvying and the runoff going downhill. And that's just, all those owners, if you scroll up a little bit, Lauren, those are the people coming to, that have come before the board, Lauren, if you scroll, sorry, if you scroll up a little bit, up, by the way. Those people who live down there, they're the ones coming in here saying, "Water is just booming down, you know, to my property." If you can go down to the next photo, please. See more, that's, that's a little bit above. That's, you know, by the tennis court area to the left there where that, where that should have been dug on the, on the plan many moons ago. And you've heard Mr. Nevin come in here and say, "Everything was done. Everything was done." It clearly wasn't. If you go down here, you basically see stormwater bypassing the catch basins. It's channeling. So I won't belabor the point, go through all these photos again. I'm happy to provide these to Mr. Geisel. But the problem on site is, especially when it's gonna warm up in a couple of months, you have massive runoff going on to these other places, and there are very simple temporary fixes that could be done on site to stop that. And this developer has turned a blind eye to that. Mr. Nevin has turned a blind eye to that. And nothing is being done to stop that. And you've heard, don't take my word for it, you've heard these people come in here to do that. So we request that while this process, which I think is a good process, is playing out to see if the design is adequate, and then to construct it according to a proper design is occurring, that something can be done to address the temporary drainage mitigation measures that can be done on site so that these people don't have sustained damage coming onto their property.
Well, we did, Alex, may I?
No.
We did discuss this at a meeting on the second. And the idea was to, it was actually better to catch, capture that water up slope further than just down there. And the idea about digging that area out by the tennis court and even potentially rain garden by that garage was something that David Crispin recommended. Those were recommended to help address
Good.
the, the amount that's going down right now until the rest of it's evaluated. And that may, those may, the one by the tennis court was obviously on the plan, but the other at the garage was not because the up slope was not considered. That's where I think I had suggested whether rain gardens made sense down lower, too, as sort of a backup measure for if things...
Behind the, yes.
Yeah, behind the houses. But until something can be done with the soil, I think we were advised that they couldn't do those temporary measures yet either. And that's my recollection from the second.
Tomorrow, we're going to, we're going to get a fair feeling as to what this story is on this site. And if there are temporary measures to be taken, then we want to obviously take them. And I think that you understand this because you're on the, you are in the SWPPP as the people who are going to make sure that it's in order.
Right. There's certain things like this picture we have up there. There's no curbing on this, so the water runs off the edge of the road and erodes it. So that's, that's, that's a problem. But, you know, it wouldn't be a problem in the final, you know, to get...
Final analysis, but it is a problem now.
It is a hot problem now. But what can be done is you can do things with, with staked hay bales that would block that flow from coming off. That's something that can be done, not tomorrow, but, you know, the beginning of the week or something like that. There's actions you can take. I've done a couple of, you know, a couple of projects, other projects I'm working on. We just did a bunch of hay bales, which redirected the water, kept it where it was supposed to be going. And that solves a multitude of problems. So what I want to do is, again, to see what I can see tomorrow.
And, and, exactly. And if, if, if you have, if there are temporary measures to be taken, then you should, you should...
Yeah, relate them to everybody.
And the way we've got this worked out is that our engineer is going to be your peer reviewer.
Yes.
But you're going to be, you're going to be the principal engineer.
Yeah.
So, this is...
Yeah, he just wants to do the design. David just wants to do the design. No, he said, "But I'll review the design." And we could certainly, you know, talk things over and, you know...
Right. I mean, he's got to, he's got to agree that what you suggest is in order. And for work. And so, I think that, other questions? Because I think that we're going to know a lot more after tomorrow. If it rains...
I plan to be out there tomorrow afternoon if it doesn't rain in the morning. If it rains in the morning, then, when we've got some decent rain, then I'll be out there. You know, maybe later morning. But I want to see, I don't want to get with the first three drops of fall.
You're gonna be, you're, right. We want a, we want a good head of steam for you before you take a look.
Yes, yes.
And when is, when is our engineer going to go out there, Bill? Sometime tomorrow, right?
Crispin?
Yeah.
I don't know, but I will find out in the morning.
Okay.
I did tell, you know, I emailed back to him. I said, "I'm gonna plan to be out there on Friday with the heavier rains," and, you know, just let him know. I didn't hear back, so I wasn't sure what his plans were.
All right. So, anything else? Hearing nothing. We're going to continue this hearing to the 23rd. Is that the right date?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four. Twenty-four, Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday.
Right.
You're using every, you're using every day of the week. Tuesday, Thursday, Wednesday.
All right. Well, thank you for coming in because I think that was...
It was a fun drive-in.
That was helpful. Well, it'll be an even more fun drive-in tomorrow. And we do encourage people to take photographs of dishes.
Always, always.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill, do you want an elastic for this, or you just want?
You've got everything you need, Bill?
I do. Can I have an extra one of these for Dave?
Sure, yeah, yeah. I will send, I'll send him an email, but there's a hard copy right here.
Send me the electronics. That's even better.
I'll send it to you, and I'll send it to him.
Good. Can you find, can you find that one for me for tomorrow, too?
That's right, the garage right here.
Yep, there's the garage. There's a drain right there.
Thank you.
Not on yet.
No, it's not. We'll, we'll see where it is.
Because it's holding water, and it's not, not going anywhere. You can have that as a reminder.
Okay.
Thank you.
We found some of these catch basins were just...
Holding water.
Well, they were basically, potentially dry well. The water went in the basin, then seeps to the ground. It isn't connected to anything.
And with the weather that we've had, that's not necessarily... The pipes, the pipes are so high that it's freezing
Yes.
before it gets out.
Right, absolutely.
So...
Yeah, no, it's, it's...
If it was down six feet, that would be fine, but this is all...
Most of the time, the drainage doesn't go down that deep.
Right.
They'll see, the drain pipes will leave at, you know, three feet.
And the water leads.
But if it's not leaving, it's in the ground, then the whole thing freezes up.
And that's...
It's not...
All right. Well, good, good luck tomorrow, and let's get this, get this under control. We're going to, next time, discuss the landscape architect, but we didn't do that tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Make a motion?
Yeah.
Prove the planning board meeting minutes for Tuesday, November 21st, 2017, as amended and reviewed.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, now, let's see. That's lost my agenda.
Milton Marketplace.
Milton Marketplace. Now, Milton Marketplace, I have communicated with, I have a view of the Milton Marketplace. These, these parking stackers are, in my view, structures. And they're going to be located in a residential zone. And in order to put a commercial structure in a residential zone, you need a variance because the planning board has no ability to authorize commercial structures in residential zones. Now, assuming that these are not structures, but assuming they're just personal property, commercial, personal property, I think the same thing applies. If you want to put your commercial car stacker in a residential area, you're gonna need a variance, whether or not it's a building. It's just, it's commercial equipment.
Do they have a variance, or are they pre, are they grandfathered to park for, park their commercial vehicles? Or park commercial, for commercial use?
I've looked at it, and it doesn't, I mean, there was a plan, but it didn't show parking stackers. I don't think that you can read parking stackers into the original variance.
Totally agree. I was, I'm sorry, I was speaking about use. Can we, do we allow for a commercial parking use in a residential area? Some bylaws specifically do it, okay. And they don't have a variance for that?
This was, you may recall when the restaurants were...
Yep.
Talked about East Milton, and the East Congregational Church law was discussed. It was pointed out that it was residential. So that putting it to a commercial use would require a variance. And I think that that was correct. And I think that changing the, I mean, if you were to build a garage in this residential zone, a commercial garage that parked the, parked the cars, you'd need to have a variance for the structure. And I think that these things probably qualify as structures. I mean, they're attached to the ground. They may not have foundations, but they're pretty solidly attached so that they, I think. But even if they're not structures, I think that, I think that if they're personal property, just you can't go put your commercial vehicles, equipment, refrigeration units, whatever, in a residential zone without getting a variance. So I said this, I suggested this to the building inspector, and he said, "Well, you may be right." And if you, you know, if you tell me, I will, I will adopt your position. And today, I suggested that maybe we would just ask town council and get his, his view on this, rather than decide the legal matter ourselves. So what do you think?
I have a question. I'm still stuck up on my parking question. Could you bring up, I don't, I don't have my plan with me. I don't have my computer open. Could you bring up the plan showing where the stackers are proposed for?
How did it, refresh my memory. I remember them being here and are discussing it and talking about noise and where they would go and all of that. But I don't recall how it arrived here. Was that because Mr. Prondak?
The building inspector suggested that they should, they said, "Do we need a variance?" And the building inspector said, "Now you should get site plan approval."
And that was based upon the fact that he didn't consider them structures? Or he did, but he didn't think of that?
He didn't think they were structures.
Okay.
Mod, so this would be a modification to existing site plan approval. Is that what he's, is that what he's suggesting?
Yes.
Okay. And this parcel here is all residential?
Yeah, no.
So where's the line? That's what I wanted to see.
On the other end of the building.
The other?
The vast majority of this building
Is residential.
is residential.
Okay. So, how do they have a commercial use and commercial parking in a residential district? Do they have a variance for that?
They do.
Thank you. Okay. That's what I was trying to understand. Great. Thank you.
So, aside, I will, I think the legal question bears investigation. But on a, on a sort of conceptual point of view, I would say the fact that I think Mr. Mimosa, Minosa said that there were some 75 employees who, of all of the businesses in the building, who park in East Milton Square. So I think if there's a way to figure out how to get some park, additional parking vertically, that seems like it wouldn't... that seems like it wouldn't have a negative impact on the residential abutters. I think, I would like to encourage it because I think it would help the square.
You recall that a number of residential abutters said that it would have adverse impact.
It depends where, though, on the property, I think, is what my understanding was.
Well, I...
And whether there could be adequate screening and safety precautions made.
These people said that even if it was in the middle, they'd still see it and that it would be terrible. I'm simply saying that if these are not structures, there's no, there's no way you can do site plan approval. We don't do site plan approval for personal property.
Right.
So they have to be structures. And if they're structures, you have to get a variance. And if the, if the Board of Appeals wants us to offer an opinion as to how these things might be cited, I mean, I have no problem doing that. It simply is that we can't authorize these things. We don't have any, any authority to do that and the Board of Appeals does.
Have you spoken to anyone on the Board of Appeals about it?
I have not.
So I was prepared and to support this, but I think Alex has raised a pretty interesting dilemma. Because I can't think of another term for what I would call this other than structured parking. And the word structure is right in there. And I don't know, to Alex's point, I think, I mean, could you call it a shed? Can you call it a garage? Can you call it a structured parking? No matter what you call it, you're lifting a, at least a car that weighs a couple thousand pounds up on the air. So it's got some heft to it.
Or it's equipment. It is. But it's like a permanent use of equipment.
So equipment is, right. I mean, equipment would not be a structure. That would be a lift and that would be personal property. So I guess that comes down to the distinction, is this a lift? Good point. Is this a lift or is it a structure?
Yeah.
And I'm not sure that's something that, the planning, is the planning board in a position to make a determination as to whether something's a structure or not? That feels like a Joe Prondak question to me.
Right.
Well, I mean, he doesn't think it's a structure, but if it's not a structure, who are we to be talking site plan approval for a non-structure?
Right. Fair enough. I think you're right.
Yeah, I mean, normally...
In any case, it doesn't belong before us, therefore. Because it's either a structure and it goes to ZBA or it's a piece of equipment and it's not in front of us.
And it seems to me that asking the ZBA to decide is, we should ask town council to determine this. And as to what the proper procedure is. I mean, the ZBA is not necessarily a tougher board than we are. In fact, some people think that it's, it isn't.
I would probably wonder about that myself. I wonder if there's, I mean, you probably could look to Chestnut Hill and Brookline in Boston and see how they interpreted. Well, I think, I think Brookline's inside. We could look to Chestnut Hill in Boston and see how they interpreted them, whether they're equipment or structural. But I, it's either equipment and it's not before us, or it's structure and it's not before us.
And then if the, if the ZBA, if it's a structure and the ZBA would like us to, I mean, if it, then we determine whether or not it's subject to site plan approval. And I think that you could say it's 500 square feet. Then it's possible the ZBA would want us to do a preemptive site plan approval. But then again, let's, let's see what Mr. Flynn has to say. You're going to say something, Bill. Either that or you're just...
I sent it to John this morning when I got your email.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Right. Well, I think that this is, this is the right place for it. So, and we have a request, is this a hearing? This is a hearing. So we've got a request from the applicant that this hearing be continued to our next meeting. And that would be 8:30?
Yes.
So moved.
All right. We have a motion and we have a second. And all in favor?
Aye.
So it's continued to 8:30. And the 475 Adam Street people have gone to consult in the kitchen. But Bill will bring them back.
Hello. Good evening. Happy New Year.
Same to you.
Some of the people at home will notice that I changed my outfit.
What a big night.
Someone thought I was done for the night. I went home, I changed.
New you. Feeling Superman, huh?
And I thought I hadn't opened up something to drink and I just said, I got a text from these guys saying, where are you? So I apologize. I didn't get a time to retire my tie.
Well, I thought you were just up. You had a tie for me and then I...
Yeah, you matched it in the last round.
All right, well, go.
Well, we're back here. Hopefully we closed at least the hearing portion of site plan approval. As you know, the Board of Appeals voted that they would grant a variance for the, for the use proposed and for the setback proposed on the front, the front yard setback, subject to hearing from this planning board on specific conditions about how the site would be developed. The most significant issue that was raised, particularly by the, by the planning, by the Board of Appeals, and after hearing from the, from Bill on behalf of the public safety officials, was that the driveway needed to be moved to the right-hand side of the, of the left-hand side of the property facing out to the right of the building. As you come in, the building moved as far as possible towards the Jubenville side of the lot. So the site plan has been amended to address that. As it said, proposed as a 17-foot wide driveway opening. I think when we were here last, Danny, you had asked that there be a green space. And that's showing, we don't have a color plan, but we do provide a three-foot planting strip between the 17-foot wide driveway and the five-foot wide sidewalk. We have new renderings of the building, sheet A3, that we hope is responsive to, in particular Cheryl's comments about the sort of making, sort of the vertical planes of the front of the building. We have the wider nose for the front entry porch shown. The windows have been adjusted and some of the upper features were adjusted from the prior plan. The one significant change is that we threw a, I think through an oversight on the architect's part and failure of us to fully understand is that the prior building did not have balconies on the rear, second floor rear of the building. So sheet A5 depicts two small balconies, sort of external living space in the rear of the building. I think that's important. We know that the abutter directly to the rear of the property has two second-floor balconies for their two family dwelling. And we don't think that this would be of any significant impact. And it's appropriate, really, in a residential setting to have some form of outdoor living area. So that's the only, that is, that is a change. Otherwise, the plan is as it was previously presented, 10 parking spaces, setback appropriately. The scale of the parking area was adjusted based on comments received from the abutter to the rear prior hearing, prior evening of hearing. And so we did make those adjustments. And so I did, at Alex's suggestion and at the request of John Leonard as the chair of the board, we have continued the hearing on the variance, hopefully to close next Thursday. And, yeah, next Thursday evening. And the board had hoped to receive a fairly detailed set of, set of conditions. And so I prepared a draft that I shared with Alex and Bill of a decision, site plan approval decision, that at least contains a set of conditions that I'd be happy to walk through and then we can agree to any further comments. I did not get them to do it in time last week. It was something that was requested this week. And I prepared it yesterday and emailed it to Alex and to Bill. So basically, the conditions were...
I'm sorry.
So, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Is it appropriate to hear from the public first before we do the conditions?
I think that my, let's just, it seems to me that we've got the parking, we've got the building. And if we can agree as to that, the specifics of the landscaping, I think is, we can, we can tell the board that we will specify what sort of trees are going to be planted. Like at the back, between the balconies here and there, I think that we need some of those Mr. Hamilton spruce trees. Which I think would be, you can see that they've actually put them in there. But I do think that it's what you did do, Steve, didn't you? These look like Mr. Hamilton's spruce trees.
I'm not aware of Mr. Hamilton's spruce trees.
Well, you will be.
I'm sure I will be, yeah.
Well, I, I like those spruce trees. They might be huge for this lot.
They would be good blocks.
They'd be good blocks.
They'll reduce mowing costs, that's for sure.
That's true. Okay.
I think that, you know, I mean, it's the visuals. They say they want a visual protection. And I think this would, this would do it.
The building's also going to be visual.
While we were still around.
That's true.
But if we, if, it seems to me that we could say to the board, we think the building is fine. We think the parking is fine. We think that the layout is fine. We, when it comes back to us, we'll make some specific requirements as to the vegetation to be used. And that, I think, that, I think would be a good way to do it. And we wouldn't have to write a site plan approval tonight. We could write Mr. Leonard a letter. Wouldn't that work?
What's that type of spruce tree?
Norway, isn't it?
Well, that's...
Isn't it Norway?
Norway.
Norway. Thank you.
No, 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 no. Is it in Norway?
I think it's Norway.
Way spruce.
Sounds right.
Oh, in any event. And are these, do we think these are arbovitae of some sort? We'll figure it out.
I think that was the plan along.
I have a, I have a quick question. And this, I think, goes to Mr. Clark. The, I believe there was a reference to extending the traffic island to prevent sharp right turns.
No, shh, sharp.
Left turns. You're coming out of the other side. So you were trying to prevent the U-turn? I'm trying to, so if you look...
You know what you're talking about. I need to see the road.
Yeah, if you can bring up the survey. I just, there it is, right there. That'll do it. So, right now, it looks like this is a, this is a possible movement that's pretty easy. You come down and then just kind of take a hard, hard right turn into that driveway. So is there a way that...
We were talking about taking, bringing that point out further.
Correct.
Yes.
So is that a, is that something that's in the works? Or is that something that we want to reference in the site plan as something to work on, you know, to get approved with the traffic commission?
I think it's something we want to work.
Because that's definitely going to be, that's, right now, today, that's a right turn you can absolutely make.
I think it's something that we have to have the developer in the, in the town work on.
Okay, so we need to reference it. That's why I'm asking about it.
Yes.
And I'm not sure if you were aware of that, so that's why I'm asking the question.
The only discussion that I've ever seen relative to the traffic island being extended by the town was actually in the other direction.
Because they could take the left in the other direction when the driveway used to come out.
That was...
You have the same condition on this side.
Well, I think that you have a sign and just say, don't do it.
Okay. I, I will disagree with you only because I think people will do it anyway. And I think the problem is they'll sit there and wait to do it. And you'll stack up on that, on that ramp. So it's something that I would really love to, I'm addressing as a concern for the public to hopefully get accomplished, one way or the other, through either this application or through the demanding the traffic deal with this because it's going to be a problem.
Even if it means like, it raised rumble strip to prevent the cars from doing that.
That's fine, exactly. I just, you gotta have more than a sign because people will just do it anyway.
It needs something that, that points out a little bit.
Right. Some sort, something.
I want the engineer, the engineers to come up with what it is, but...
Who's engineers?
Our engineer can do that. Town engineer can let us know what it's going to be that it's, he needs to see that design opposite that island in order to come back with...
DPW won't want the rumble strips.
Nobody's going to want something that...
They need striping, we need rumble strip. We need something.
Right. I mean, it may be striping, it may be, I don't know what it will be. Because you are, you are...
That was one thing I wanted to raise.
To, to get into that driveway, you literally are, you're coming back against the traffic. Because the driveway is behind the point of that nose. I hear you. I know what you're talking about.
I just know behavior and people are going to say, well, if I wait two minutes, like, or 30 seconds, I can zip across.
People are already doing that. You actually can do that fairly safely because there is a, there are big voids. There are big voids in the traffic associated with the light at Brook Road and...
And that's why I'm worried about it now is because people will wait for the void.
Well, they wait, they wait, 90% of the traffic...
Is waiting anyway.
Is waiting anyway because it's, almost everyone who's coming from the Wood Road extension is going for the purpose, they're either crossing into Jubenville, they're crossing into the neighborhood, they're stopping at the post office, or they're going down Granite Avenue and back onto the expressway south. You know, maybe 1% is coming around and going into the Bank Building. And another 2% is going back across the expressway. Everything is crossing. What the, the reason why, as I understand it, the public safety folks wanted this here was to prevent the logical crossing from that point into the driveway at the other side of the property. And then, so they would rather have an occasional car go through the neighborhood and come back around and in, rather than come across.
And I came around to that and I, and I just, and I ultimately agreed with it, except that I still think people are going to take that, that hard right rather than go through the neighborhood.
It could be something as simple as it needs to be painted up.
Exactly. I think it's something...
And that's why I'm saying I want the engineer to take it.
I think you'll be hopeful with that.
And does the traffic commission, this is a traffic commission deal, isn't it?
I don't think so. I think it's just the, I think it's our engineer and DPW department.
Okay.
That would just say, I would just like to say that's another, if it's possible, that would be another reason to hold off on the conditions until we hear from them on that, on that issue.
What is it that we want the traffic to do?
That's fine. So then we can go through it. But that means we're going to need something referenced there.
If there were a sign, what is it that, that we want the people to do? Do we want them to go around to the neighborhood or what should the sign say?
Yeah, you want them to just follow the traffic pattern. You're not supposed to take a hard right there. You're supposed to merge into traffic.
And then they go...
They do have to go through the neighborhood. That's how they do it.
I don't know. You might put a, a yellow sign with an arrow. A round yellow sign with an arrow.
I know that the town is working on broader traffic issues in this area. And it's one of the things the town needs to be considering is what's the appropriate combination of things. I think it's appropriate for the town to incorporate that into its work and go from there. I, I'm not sure, one of the issues we have is that the... One of the issues we have is that the chairman of the Board of Appeals goes away February 1, and he's gone for a while, so the hearing has to come.
I'm not trying to hold this up tonight.
And I appreciate that, and I'm also mindful of the extent of process that we've been through, and, you know, that there's only so much more that we can do without turning to some other use. I want to go there.
Well, I think the plans look good to me, and that we can say to the Board of Appeals, "They look good to us," and say to the Board of Appeals, "The DPW and Town Engineer will look at the traffic island, and that we will specify vegetation." And I would think that that should do it after, but we're going to hear from the public to make sure that there aren't other things that we have overlooked.
Just to be clear, we can't sign a site plan... We couldn't approve a site plan application anyway until the variance is granted, correct?
That's right.
Right, okay.
It would be premature.
Yeah, so they have to go first anyway.
I agree. I think Mr. Leonard unfortunately disagreed with me the other night on that, but...
So, I'm just trying to determine what your... So, could you explain to us why you think we need to issue a... Or why we have to go through the conditions tonight?
I think what the... Board of Appeals is hoping, that they will, when they issue their variance decision, that we'll incorporate a set of conditions that have been recommended for inclusion by the planning board, and that we'd simply come back. Dealing with the issue of vegetation, I think, is a separate issue, but...
Yeah, but can't he reference... Can't he just have a simple condition that says the... This must be in compliance with a site plan approval with conditions from the planning board?
I think he could.
So, maybe that's the recommendation that we make to him, is that he approves it subject to our site plan.
Well, I mean, but to say that... I mean, we will hear from the public, but if we were to say that the plans look good to us, then, I mean, there isn't much more to say as far as conditions are concerned. I mean, we'll talk about...
Yeah, we've got to go through a review, but I agree with you.
Striping and...
I agree with you.
So, let's see what the public has to say about this.
Can I point a few things out?
Yes. Before the public gets heard, we're going to hear from Cheryl.
On the civil site plan, the... There's a notation next to the porch, and it says "ramp," and I go to the architectural site plan and the ground floor plan, and I'm looking at the dimensions, I'm looking at the change of topography, and I don't think you really need a ramp in the sense of a handicap ramp that requires railings and et cetera. So, I'd like it not to have that, actually, because I think just a slope sidewalk would look much nicer, and I don't think it needs to be a ramp, so I'd just like for the engineer to confirm that, okay? And then, again, just for consistency across the drawings, the civil plan, do you need me to point that out here, right here?
But the drawings don't show a railing, do they?
No, they don't show a railing, but the plan... That's why I'm just pointing a few things out, because if you look at one plan, you look at another, they're not 100% consistent. I just want to make sure I understand what we're getting from each one, and that everybody else understands when we say the plans. So, if you go to L1, that's inconsistent with the civil site plan, and also inconsistent with A1, so I think L1 is out of date, to be honest with you.
I think L1 is... L1 is drawn by the architect, so it's a general plan of the site plan itself, is it... It's made by Bob Hanen.
All right, well, since there's no dimensions on that porch, I'm going to then... We're going to assume that A1 is graphically depicting the size of the porch and the steps accurately, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. So, yeah, so we'll just...
On the site plan approval, we would just... Would we just attach, at least from a plan standpoint, and we just reference, I assume, the plan anyway, the survey? We could reference the other ones for architecturals.
Yeah, because, in other words, like, what we discussed before, this is an old version of the size of what the steps and the porch are going to be on L1, and A1 represents the larger size. So, if we say we're approving the plans, and they're inconsistent, I just want to make sure that we understand that what we're saying is we're approving the larger porch as depicted on A1, not the smaller one that's depicted on L1.
Yeah, in fact, in fact, the draft... The draft of the site plan approval that I submitted to Alex doesn't reference L1.
Okay.
I don't even include that as a reference, because it's not...
L1 is useful for the vegetation.
So, we're going to... But what I understood is that you're going to say we're going to receive an updated L1 in the future, is that right?
Right, but, I mean, that is the basis that they're going to be proceeding on, we're just going to specify the size and the species. I mean, that's basically... L1 shows what the landscape is going to be. I mean, we're not going to require re-landscaping the thing.
So, if L1's not referenced in the language, then it will be referenced in the language?
It will be. It seems to me... I don't see that there is a problem with all these sheets.
Well, I...
I mean, if there's an inconsistency, it would seem to me we can solve it on site plan approval.
Yeah, I'm just pointing them out. I'm not saying it's a problem for tonight.
Oh, okay.
I'd like to correct it.
We need to clarify it in the language, that's all.
When we're getting... When we get there, right? I just want those things either corrected or referenced, which is accurate.
I mean, we want the plans to be consistent, and we don't want a railing.
And I... Right, that's... And I don't think it's necessary, that's why I point out that nomenclature for a ramp, it kind of takes a handicap ramp with handrails, and I don't think it's necessary.
You can put the railing out in the street.
There you go. Maybe solution.
And then, one other thing I'll point out while you're looking at that plan, and when you do the final submission of that, where you have the driveway and the sidewalk, and there's a narrow landscape in between, if that's greater than 30 inches change in topography, a guardrail will be required there, so maybe he can look at that and make it... And grade it such that... And grade it out, so that it's not required.
We could do that, but when we're doing the foundation, Cheryl, this is all... All heights are determined, we'll grade that to suit, and we'll make sure we don't have a handrail.
Right.
Yeah.
That's what we have to do.
That's what she's saying.
That's right, that's what I'm saying, but that's not what's there now, that's all I'm saying.
The other thing is, to speak back to Brian's point about the island, I don't think that that's depicted 100% on this, you know, that we have our survey here, but I think that island is further up towards the Blue Hill Bank, and I don't think you can make... You can turn right to get into that entrance. I'd like to see the Google map on it, because the thing is, I certainly don't want to get into doing street improvements, and we have enough to do here, that's the way things are.
Let's pick a word that's there.
And then, my last comment is, I think the balconies are far enough away and/or blocked by... Like, the one that's closer to the neighbors actually has a tree in front of it, because there's a landscape island there, and the other one is just about as far away from the neighbor as you can get. So, while that neighbor had a concern about balconies, I think that the one is blocked and the other's pretty far away.
Yes.
So, I have no trouble with the balconies.
Good addition.
And I do think it helps break up that length of facade.
Yep, it's a good addition.
That's my last comment.
Okay, now, public, come on out.
This is your image. Where is it? Yeah. It's not, it's as big as it'll go. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Jessica Sergi, and I'm at 462 Adam Street. I really don't have much to say tonight, because my main concern is about the variance itself, and I know that's not your purview, but I would, just on the island issue, I do agree with Mr. Corcoran, I think only the other side of the island was discussed, which is the part right in front of our house, and we were concerned about U-turns on that part, and I do think it's a similar issue on the other side, where there could be U-turns to get into the new driveway location, so I would ask that that be looked at, the island issue, and so I think that's all I actually wanted to say tonight.
Well, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so what is your pleasure, Planning Board of Milton?
I'd make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
We've closed the public hearing. That's progress. Now, we understand that before we can issue a site plan approval, we really need something to issue it on, and that would be the variance, and then get the... Once the variance is in hand, I, you know, I am disinclined to write a decision tonight just because of the lack of time for the board to consider it, but I think that we have enough here to say to Mr. Leonard, we like the plan, we think that you can... You should authorize it, you should give a variance so that it can be possible, and that there are a few minor details, such as the landscaping, which we will supplement down the line, something along those lines. Wouldn't that do it? I would think it would do it.
One can hope.
So, then, just by way of process, once they would grant the variance, then it would come back to us for final site plan approval? Is that the way it works?
I have always understood, and I've had five or six of these, where I've got variances where I've also had the requirement for site plan approval. Site plan approval here is triggered because the variance is creating a commercial use, so site plan approval is not required in strictly residential purposes, so they've determined... There's been a determination that site plan approval is triggered, and it's important, and the planning board appreciates... Excuse me, the Board of Appeals appreciates guidance from the planning board in matters involving site plan-related issues. I have always understood that you cannot grant site plan approval until you have the right to do it, which predicated on the right to pursue the use that's been approved. So, the way I have done it is to open... Conducted preliminary meetings, but then open with the Board of Appeals, ask to continue to a date certain, be far enough into the future to address site plan approval issues with the planning board, so the planning board has the ability to make some reasonable recommendations to the Board of Appeals about site plan issues, that they can then adopt as part of their decision, and then come back to the planning board for final vote on site plan approval, and then I have two decisions that relate to each other. We get into a little debate on Tuesday night with the Board of Appeals about that order, and John Leonard was not agreeing with me. He thought that you had to complete site plan approval, and that that would then be incorporated into the variance decision, which is the first time I've encountered that, so I'm kind of stuck between a set of opinions, and I'm trying to...
All right, well, we have a... Maybe Brian can solve this. What's your question, Brian?
No, I was going to suggest that if we could give them a site plan approval... Well, no, I don't want to... I don't think we should issue a site plan approval, but if we could give them certain conditions to put into the ZBA, but that's not what he wants. You're not saying he wants conditions, he wants approval tonight?
I mean, the problem is... The problem is, we could do it, but, you know, it's a pretty tight timeline he imposed on us last Tuesday.
I haven't even seen it. I haven't even read it yet.
Two days ago.
I don't think you even sent it out, did you?
I haven't seen it.
No, I think it...
So, if... I guess...
Look, I think we can do a letter, I think we can do a letter which...
I think if you did a letter that incorporated a set of...
And simply say that we have these procedural issues, blah, blah, blah.
Fundamentally, what they're looking for is a determination of the planning board, that the appropriate place for the site driveway is where it's currently located on the plan, because that was of significant debate, and it was a debate... It was a difference of opinion between the boards about where it should go and what was the appropriate place. So, they clearly want that. They want to know that the site... That the location of the building is appropriate, that the location and layout of the parking area is appropriate, that it's efficiently buffered relative to setbacks as proposed, that the facades of the buildings as currently depicted are appropriate, because they're concerned in particular about Cheryl's... I know they've watched... John, at least, has watched this, and he's... He and I talked at length at one of the hearings about your specific recommendations as to how to change the facade, the front facade of the building. They were wanting to pay attention to, you know, the historical commission's concern about the massing on the building, and so your comments on that in particular are helpful, and I think those are the ones that are significant, you know? Site layout, building, architectural depiction, location of the driveway, and that, and I think if you had those laid out in a set of numbered paragraphs in a letter to the board, penned by the chairman, that would be acceptable, and then if... As a last condition, if you said that we would ask you to condition the variance upon final site plan approval by the planning board with respect to issues related to planting and, you know, whatever other conditions you want to impose, then that would be... I think that would be acceptable.
And with grading, we want of those?
Site...
I don't think we want to limit our conditions.
What?
We wouldn't want to limit our ability to make conditions, but certainly any conditions we have...
No, I mean, but, yeah, but I was just wondering, I mean, we were talking grading, and would that be something down the line? I mean, you say that you grade it so that it works, right?
That's what we have to do.
PR and DAK won't give them a permit otherwise, theoretically.
Okay, I think we can do that, and I think that that's what we should do.
Good solution.
And if the board authorizes me to send this letter, I will do so.
I move to authorize the chair to send the letter that he just described.
I second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, we'll do it.
Okay, and then, you have a draft of what I gave you.
Yeah, no, that's useful.
References, the plans, as they currently exist.
Exactly, I got it.
Thank you. Thank you. Apologize for all the fun.
You can open the door now. You can get into your pajamas now, I hope.
Almost.
All right, now, I think that we've got eight minutes for Lauren to tell us about what the group is doing.
Alex, may I just ask a question relative to the agenda?
Yeah.
The old business on the zoning articles? Yeah, and the reason I wanted to ask about that is there were citizens petitions related to zoning matters.
Are there citizens petitions? What did Maggie submit, hers?
Not that I know of.
Who did it?
I know there's one from the Yuck Club, and I don't know who the other one is.
That's the one you're talking about.
There's two. There's another one related to putting a moratorium on any zoning change.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Temporary moratorium on any zoning change.
Until...
And it's submitted by some of the neighbors. And it's submitted by some of the neighbors in the vicinity of their nursery.
Until when? On any zoning change in town?
Any zoning change in town.
Four neighbors of...
Four neighbors. They were at the top of the list.
We can vote on that one right now.
But in any case, did the Board of Selectmen vote to move those forward to...
I don't know.
I have, next time we're going to discuss the revolving fund, because it seems to me we've got some work to do there. If we're going to have a revolving fund, we've got to...
Is that the traffic study fund?
Yeah.
Traffic or mitigation? Okay, sorry.
And I'll speak to that just for a moment. So I actually had call with council the other day for framing, that does a lot of work in framing him and NADAC, both of which have that bylaw in place, and he gave me contacts for both communities for Lauren to speak with and get information at. She was, she committed to do that, and then she and I will speak and go from there.
Okay.
So we are, we will be prepared to do that.
All right. Okay. That's, that's good. Any other zoning issues? We'll be doing zoning again. Well, it's going to be on the agenda from now on. And we're going to start discussing October, because it really sneaks up on us. And we don't have that full an agenda for May, and so we should be thinking October. Now, Lauren, why don't you, you've now only got six minutes to discuss what the group is doing.
Do you name the planning department?
You and, you and the department heads about making sure that we get everything, all the i's dotted and t's crossed.
Right. Well, there's a lot going on in the planning department. I'll give a quick, we go. In addition to the Planning Board, we also staff the Master Plan Implementation Committee, the Affordable Housing Trustee, the trustees, the Affordable Housing Trustees, another committee that I meet with regularly. We also have the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee. We have been working with other departments towards a Green Communities Grant that I just discussed before the Board of Selectmen recently. Let's see what's going on. Complete Streets, another initiative going on in town. See...
Public hearing for that will be on January 30th at the library.
That's correct. And then in addition, we regularly meet with MIPC committees. The Town of Milton is actually part of two of the subcommittees, both the Inner Core Committee, as well as the Three Rivers, that is more of the Southwest. So we meet to discuss different topics throughout, throughout the year. And we've also been meeting, Town of Milton is also a member of the South Shore Home Consortium, which is with Braintree, Quincy, Weymouth, and Holbrook. It's a collective group that allows for affordable housing resources, whether it's first-time home buyer programs or rehab programs. So we, just recently, we're meeting with them as well. We meet monthly. And in addition, the South Shore Home Consortium also has a Fair Housing Committee that is regional. Alex is one of our appointed members to that, so I've been attending those regularly as well.
When was the forum yesterday?
It was. We, just yesterday, I went to a training session on fair housing, which was very informative and I found very useful, which I can send to Alex, since Alex isn't able to attend.
I didn't, you know, I didn't get the email from Nate reminding me, and so I just, and it was on his, it was there. I mean, he supposedly sent it. So I think Microsoft deserves some mention.
Well, next time I'll make sure that you get an email from me as well.
Exactly. You give me a...
Well, Lauren went to the home, I went to the traffic commission, and we talked about 25 miles an hour townwide. So we're on thickly settled roads. So we will be doing that, it's just a matter of how.
Which generates a revenue.
We've been working on the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee. We have architectural plans for a new building. We're working on the site issues. We had some contract issues to deal with, and now we're moving on to hiring the civil engineer for that project. Where one of the zoning articles is an updated zoning map. With the GIS manager, I have been working with him to update our zoning map so that you can actually pick a site and find out exactly where you are. Our old ones were done by, they were based on what the draftsman did. The draftspeople had it from there. It was digitized. If you look at it, it's extremely difficult to figure out exactly where you are on those plans. One of the things that we want to be able to do is have a map that is parcel-based so we can figure out exactly where everything is. We'll have plans available on the 25th when we move this thing forward.
And they're going to be full-size plans.
We'll have full-size for you.
And we're going to have a full-size copy of the old zoning map as well. And then we're going to want people to spend some time looking at it, and making sure that it's, it's absolutely accurate.
The last time a zoning map was published in an annual report was 1950. So we've had how many changes? And we've, that was the only time it got put into an annual report. 58, sorry, 58.
But in 80-something, we approved a zoning map.
We changed, we changed our zoning map in 60 and 67, and in 77, twice. We did it in 88. We did it in 2002. But we never took, except for 58, and put a map into the annual report so that we actually have something we can look at.
Well, I mean, but the records of the planning department are supposed to contain the maps.
And because of it, I've been trying to do this for like 10 years, get a zoning map that you can actually identify specific parcels.
But in any event, the last zoning map is the official zoning map, because it was enacted as the zoning map. And we're going to have a copy of that, and we're going to have a copy of the new one. And it isn't that we, we can't, I mean, we can make adjustments, but we have to identify what the adjustments are so that people understand what we've adjusted.
Right.
Well, that's...
But the plan, the, the plan is...
Knowledge is power.
I'm going to let it go without my good. I'm working on getting traffic counts for Adams Street at Adams and Squanton and for the Milton Village area. Milton Village area is for the Master Plan Implementation Committee. We've sent out to the, a request out to the county. The county's agreed to do it. Now it's just a matter of locating and when. The Complete Streets, again, there is a public meeting on the Complete Streets program, January 30th at the library, 7 o'clock. And then one last thing is Kevin Walker has filed a lawsuit against the town for, he's appealing the Carberry zoning, the Carberry Walcott zoning.
So who, I'm just curious, I saw that. Who does he sue in that point? Is he just suing the Town of Milton?
The Town of Milton, because he doesn't feel that that zoning is appropriate.
He's supposed to, I mean, if John accepts it, accepts service, I mean, he's supposed to serve all the members individually and do it in a certain way, but I think that he has, he has just sued the Town of Milton, and John is prepared to accept the service because it isn't done the way it, the statute requires it to be done. But if you accept service, then that solves the problem.
Understood. But he's not really suing the Planning Board. He's suing the town.
Oh, he's suing the town.
Because...
Town meeting voted to support it.
Yeah. Right, all right.
But it...
I was just curious. I was just curious. I don't, we don't need a further explanation. I was just asking the question.
It's, it's sort of sloppy, in my view. I mean, just the procedure is, if I were doing it, I would want to do it right in accordance with the statute, because you don't want to get knocked out on procedure. So one thing, oh, everyone has something. I, my, Cheryl, what's, what do you have?
No, I'm happy to, you were about to say something. I'm happy to wait.
No, 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 no. Go ahead.
There were just a few things that I, I thought it would be useful for the board to, to think about, and to, if I may, ask Planning Department staff to kind of maybe do a little research and update us on it. One was an email that I asked Lauren to circulate, which has to do with zoning reform and housing initiative, initiatives at the state level. I feel as if we should be apprised of what they're doing, and this was brief, but it made me think that there's more information that I'd like to be made aware of. So if we could get some, even if it means, if there's some kind of written material, but ideally, if you, one of you two could present us with some update about that, I think that would be helpful and useful. And maybe we can do it the Master Plan Committee as well, just to think about how the housing part might work. And then also, just like an update on the codification, you know, from the clerk, where, where that is, I think it'd be useful for us to track that and see if there's something that we should review. And then lastly, is to, to think about, because we've had so much discussion about enforcement and where we could improve, make improvements in our processes, I'm thinking nuts and bolts, and there might be other bigger process things to think about, but just, could we have a template, for example, for a special permit, which might just be a table of contents of things that, issues that we've addressed in other special permits, and things to consider, so that when we look at a special permit to start with, we could say, okay, these are useful for us to consider for this one, and these are not appropriate. Because it seems to me we're inconsistent in, in the way we've addressed some things. No offense to anyone who's been involved with them, especially those who've written them.
Well, I'd be interested to know what you think has been inconsistent.
Well, I think some of ours, like having to do with the construction hours, for example, or how detailed we're, we're requiring the construction management plans, or things of that nature.
Construction, construction hours depend on how close the neighbors are. I mean, it's not a one-size-fits-all situation.
But I think when an applicant comes in, it, it would be useful for us to know anyway what we've done on, in other cases. I mean, that's just my view about how we can improve our processes, to say that we want to learn from each one of them that we've had, and what, in each one in particular, where we've had a lot of complaints come in after. The construction management plan, the same thing. If we had a template, I, I know Alex, it all has to be tailored, but...
I, I think that you will find that trying to do a model special permit is practically impossible, because you, you write your permit depending on what the public hearing has, what the application and the public hearing have indicated are necessary. But I don't, I, it's, it's sort of like asking about the codification of the zoning. I, I think that that's going to be a ways off. And as you know, we have a, we have a fully up-to-date, almost up-to-date copy of the zoning, which Tim did, and I've asked Lauren to add the icehouse zoning and the Carberry zoning to it, to put Planning Board, unofficial Planning Board version on it, and I think that we should put it on our website, so that people are able to tell what the zoning is, because they can't do it now with the, what they get given.
Well, I know that on zoning matters, the state has modeled bylaws for particular types of zoning. They have it on mixed-use districts, they have it for accessory, they have it for historic districts. So they get modified, they have lots of things about, here's what you should think about, this might not be appropriate. I don't know if they have something on special permits, but if they did, it would be useful to know, because it's not so much about what the content is, should be, it's about the issues that should be addressed. And that, to me, at least if we had a consistency of a starting point, then, so maybe you wouldn't have to draft them all either, Alex.
I, look, I, I think that what you're talking about is sort of like, we've got this codification of the zoning that'll be coming down soon. I, I think you're going to find it's probably, I've got to say that the state, some of the stuff the state produces never should be reduced to paper because it's so bad. But there is some good stuff that the state does, so, you know, we have to pick and choose. Just because they say the state does this and the state's your friend, you've got to accept it. That's not, we've got to, we've got to have some quality review here. But we'll, we'll look into that, Lauren. Right? Okay, now, Dana, you have something.
It's along the same lines as Cheryl. I, I would love to see more checklists, and I was wondering how your meetings were going with Joe Prondak and the department heads about, like, you know, their opinion and input on checklist, like, I know, I know when Joe came in, he was interested in, in streamlining, like, the time of construction times and so forth. I mean, he might have some good ideas to make the departments work easier amongst each other. So I was just wondering, I know you've done an awful lot, you've got a full plate, but how are those meetings going?
Right. The developer meetings, we have been meeting. It's, it's been on an as needed basis, which is almost more frequent than was planned, you know, to have a set calendar standing meeting. That hasn't really been the case. It's been, an issue comes up, we contact the department heads that we need to speak with, and we speak with them.
Good.
So as far as I've seen so far, communication has been going well between the departments. As far as things like checklist, I think that is helpful. I have been working on things like that, but urgent matters sometimes push those to the back burner. But it is something that I am working on, and happy to continue looking into these suggestions that Cheryl just made.
And I, as we have these big projects, you know, Carberry, Pulte, all these, it'd be nice to have, like, the checklist at the front of every project, because I was kind of envisioning Joe Prondak when he said, you know, an issue arrives and I have to read through, you know, these huge documents, if they, if he could kind of know the bullet points at the front of each of them. I mean, I would assume that he would be doing that, but I know he's got a new person on his staff. How's that going? I'd be curious to know. And does he have the support to be able to do that? Because even watching the 333 meeting from last week, 333 Brush Hill Road, I'm, I'm still very, very concerned that enforcement is lacking. I feel like if we don't have penalties built in, what is, what's going to prevent another 333 Brush Hill Road from happening? If there's no real consequence for taking down 50 some-odd trees, I mean, I'm, I'm sure it's costing them a lot of time and effort and, and, but I'm still astounded.
Well, they're going to have to replace them.
Yeah.
Yeah, they can't deliver at this point. They can't meet their special permit obligations.
Once a 50, a tree that's decades and decades old is gone, it's going to take decades and decades again for it to grow to that size. So that is something that is pretty tough.
It's just still so concerning that we had a tree management plan, a construction management plan, site, you know, SWPP, whatever that, that acronym is, and none of it was followed, and there were plans that weren't accurate, and on and on and on. And there's no fines, there's no, you know, I would almost think of like a daily fine until they get on track, so that we would prevent anyone from thinking of doing business like that in this town again.
We can't, we can't do that.
But what can we do? What can we do so that we're not in that position?
The permit should have been pulled way before it was. That, that's the issue there. I mean, if you look at those aerials, there was supposed to be no construction until the stormwater system worked, which means that the road had to be in place. And if you look at those aerials, those houses, those foundations were poured before there was even any indication of a road. So errors were made.
And in terms of the...
But you know, the develop, we rely on developers to look after of their best interest, and we assume that they will. And most developers do. I mean, we can't babysit... I mean, we can't babysit every developer and, you know, listen for the chainsaw.
And to your question, at this point, there cannot be a certificate of occupancy issued until they can meet a site plan, which they can't meet anymore. So now they have to come back to us and get their site plan modified. And that's where the, that's where the punitive piece of it is going to have to come in.
Except it's not punitive to the extent that they've damaged neighbors' properties and they removed legal trees.
It'll be punitive.
Well, they've also taken up so many town resources. They've taken up the staff, they've taken up our time, they've taken up enforcement's time, they've taken up all of this time. And I'm just feeling like there's no regulation.
But we can sue them. We can get Mr. Flynn to sue them.
Well, I just feel like enforcement fell apart there. I mean, in, there were various points where enforcement didn't happen. And I just, I want there to be, you know, there should have been notification of the planning board at a variety of times, that the planning board was never notified of a variety of things not working, not happening, not...
Well, the planning board was told that the engineer was on top of the matter, and the engineer wasn't. But the planning board was told that this is, he is. He's on top of the matter, he's doing these things. I mean, this is, this is a terrible, this is not likely to occur, reoccur in a hurry, I don't think.
I hope not. This is all I've dealt with since I've been on the board. This came up at my second meeting, so this is what I've been...
But I mean, when we do Carberry, there will probably be another 100-page permit. And whether or not the assistant building commissioner is going to have time to read 100 pages and digest it and be on top of it is, you know, it's going to be tough.
Well, I think to Denny's point though, if, and to what Joe said when he was here, if we could have an executive summary, if you will, that at least highlights the things and the time periods at which we think are very important for the building inspector to review the work. Because we spent all of the hours and hours and hours with the applicant, you know, and with the neighbors. And if he has to read through paragraphs and paragraphs of 100 pages, he's going to likely miss aspects of it. That's where the sort of the checklist comes in.
But the executive summary has to pick up every point in eight pages, and that is...
I deal with this every day in leasing, right? The person who negotiates the lease is gone the day the lease gets signed, and now you've got to operate a lease. The minute you abstract that lease, the people that are going to enforce that lease are only going to look at the abstract. So now the fine points of the permit that you spent hours and hours and hours negotiating are, they're ignored because no one ever goes beyond the executive summary. That's not the right answer.
No, it's not. The developer in general wants to keep according to the permit. It's for the developers, if you can't trust the developer, you have to babysit them every day, it's, it's tough.
But I mean, in the last meeting on 333, it came up that Joe Prondak didn't, Joe Prondak approved moving one of the houses 50 feet and another house, I don't know, some 15 or 20 feet, but the planning board was never informed. That change affected everything. That change affected the trees, the stormwater management plan, everything.
But ultimately, Joe Prondak doesn't work for the planning board, so...
But there should be something that triggers him to tell the planning board.
Yeah, he didn't do his job.
But there's, if you do a subdivision plan and you have the house located in your subdivision plan, it's not in an exact point. It's not pinned to the ground. It's in a building envelope.
Well, it can be, it can be specifically located, but as you remember St. Pius, they said, no, we locate these things as we go around. And so St. Pius, that the particular units were not specifically located.
But they were, but that's a special, that's with the special permit.
Well, this is a special permit.
It's his feeling that within the site plan, you don't have a building envelope. Those houses all meet the setbacks for any district. So he felt that he could move them because they were still within what the building envelope was.
Right. Well, in any event, in any event, mistakes were made, and it's not a, it's not a classic case to say, we have to assume all these developers are as the same as they are, because most developers aren't. They look at the permit, they know what's in the permit, and they say, we are going to comply with the permit because it's in our interest.
Yeah, but the reason we have these detailed permits and this detailed language is really in the event that, I mean, my understanding too, oftentimes with legal documents is you have to have them in the event things don't go the way you think they're going to go. So we have, we have to build in the protections for the one or two bad apples, if you will, but we still need those protections, right?
Well, the protections are that they have to deliver in accordance with the permit. If they don't, they either have to fix it or they have to come back to us.
But that, but I understand that, but I still think there should be some checks along the way because you get to a point where you flooded out your neighbors and you've damaged trees beyond repair because no one addressed it in a timely manner.
You're dealing with 333 Brush Hill Road, and they did all, they did all one.
We've lost other trees on other sites.
No, it does, hasn't happened elsewhere.
Sure it did.
Like where?
Beechwood.
Like where?
Beechwood.
No, the, come on. Beechwood, we don't know if those trees were impacted by construction at Beechwood.
Well, we know that stakes, the trees have not been staked out properly for protection of trees. We know that, more than one site that that's happened. That even happened at Woodmere.
But ultimately, the burden of enforcing the permit lies with the code enforcement officer who works for the town administrator.
But he has to look at that permit.
Yes, he does.
Otherwise, it's just the building code.
But if we create a summary, the last thing you want to do is give a summary because that creates an incentive to not read every page.
Well, then, if it's not a summary, then it's something else.
If he wants a summary, then he should read every single page, and he should summarize it himself so he can remember it. Because you've got to force him to read every single page.
That's right.
He's the one who needs to know the details because he's the only one out there.
But we still should highlight the things that are critical to us at timelines. Like, for example, if there's a construction management plan, what, when he reviews that construction management plan, if it varies for every single one that we have, then he's reading 10 different ones, and he has to say, okay, on St. Pius, I've got to do this, but on Woodmere, I've got to do, I mean, that's the same one. On 333 Brush Hill Road, I have to do that. Or if we had more standards, then he knows that every special permit has certain things that he's going to follow.
I think that this is, this is fine. Why don't we put you in charge of the subcommittee to come up with a model special permit?
Well, I think we've already asked staff if they can assist with that, right?
All right. But you should be, you should be a consultant in that effort because I think that you're, it's easy to say and it's a million times harder to do.
Well, I can tell you, in the building code, for example, the building code sets out particular things that have to be inspected by an independent inspector. It has to be tested, concrete, steel, et cetera. That is required, it has to be, that schedule has to be submitted when you submit for the building permit. It's one page, it tells the contractor, submit these things to the building inspector when you get your independent test on. It doesn't take away this thick of building code, which still has to be followed. My point is, it can be a checklist like that, and I'll be happy to help Lauren with that checklist.
All right. We have a volunteer. You heard her, Lauren.
My final point was that, I understand, I think it's the Boston Redevelopment Authority or there's the Boston...
Planning Development Agency.
Yeah, website, that has a great website, and that might be helpful for checklist. I think we talked about that video, so...
Mine's very, very quick.
What?
Mine's very, very quick.
Okay.
I think we need to do a couple of quick signature pages for the Mullen Rule, right?
Yes.
So just reminding you that I think we, at this point, we almost all need one.
Yes, for January 2nd.
I'll explain it to you after a minute.
Okay.
And I would make a motion to adjourn.
So, but you have one last sentence?
No, 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 I was just telling, I, my only point was, let's put the planning board unofficial version of the zoning on our site so that people know what the zoning is.
Oh, good.
Sounds like a good idea.
I like that. An I second.
All right. All in favor?
Thank you.